You're putting the sensors on?
Those we are.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
In fact.
This is our computer.
I sort of am. I manage the coffee shop right now. But I'm transitioning to dynamite roasting. What is crazy?
I'm Justin Madaski. Thanks for the light yet. She has the present. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started now that everybody's managed to get in the building. So I might have to dart out and let people in because we can't keep the doors unlocked apparently. We don't have them locked right now. But thank you, everybody, for being here. We're going to have today a risk assessment presentation from the EPA to let us know about how they do risk assessment for this particular site. So we're excited to be able to get a lot more information about this. For those of you who don't know, I think most of you do, but my name is Justin Madaski. I'm the chair of the CAG board. And we have special guests here today, John, who's with us quite a bit. And Beth, do you guys want to stand up and introduce yourselves since you guys haven't been here previously?
I'll start. My name is Angela Miller and I'm the new community involvement coordinator. So I'm delighted to play the role here tonight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining.
I'm Sharon Thompson. I'm the ecological risk assessment for the site of the EPA in Atlanta.
So it's Angela Miller.
Sharon Thompson and I have my father in THOMS.
Thank you so much. Keep going, sorry to interrupt.
And I'm Tim Frederick. I'm the human health risk assessor assigned to the site. My name is up there. I didn't.
You can get us all on the first.
So we're gonna do that first. And you guys are prepared for questions, right? If we have any questions at the end, that's it?
Yes.
All right, so there'll be some question time and then we'll spend some time, if we have time, talking about the comments the CAG may like to make, or the requests for further information the CAG may like to make.
Yes, so if you did not receive an email about this meeting, that means that you're not on our contact list. If you would like to be on our contact list and did receive this email, anybody ready to raise their hand? Is there anybody in that category? Okay. And the only, thanks, I keep track, I'm the secretary of the board. I keep track of our attendance. And the only case I don't recognize is yours. Would you be willing to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Karen Soche. I am on the team that supports Chemtronics on the Chemtronics side.
Great.
I'm a risk assessor, so I was interested in doing your risk assessment.
Okay, cool, thank you. Karen Soche?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I can get it to you, thanks. No, I recognize me as someone I can do. That's it for me. All right. Anybody who needs to make announcements before we start? All right, please take it away. Thank you guys so much for being here.
Thanks. Again, my name is Tim Frederick. And I'm gonna be talking about the human health part. Sharon's gonna be talking about ecological risk assessment. With pulling this together, I understood there was a broad range of experience in risk assessments. So I didn't want to assume too much, so I errred on the side of putting too much in than too little. If you have any questions along the way, I'd like to be really informal, just stop me and ask me to go deeper. If you need more information, this meeting is for you. So let me communicate with you and tell you what you need to know. And just by the way, clarification, the risk assessment that was, that is, who's right? Does anybody read the risk assessment? Okay. It's a challenging and daunting document. It was prepared by Chemtronics contractors, not EPA. So we're the same boat as you, just reading through it, making sense of it. And my job is to tell John where I think they need to improve the document. Or, you know, that they've done it according to EPA's policies and guidance. And I'm still working my way through it because it is a bear. So what I'm talking about is the basics of the risk assessment process. Some of you who've waited into the document may already know some of this, but I think it's good to lay the framework for how risk assessment works at EPA. And then I'm gonna talk about how it's performed at the site because there are some unique wrinkles that are done at the site, there's some unique chemicals at the site. And then talk about the overview of what they found out. And then at the end, I'll, you know, answer any questions you have. But then again, anytime, just give a shout and I'll stop and kind of talk. So the risk assessment process is not something that EPA gave up. It can keep, its origins are in National Academy of Science document called Risk Assessment and Federal Government Managing the Process. It's called the Red Book because it's red. The Risk Assessment Guides are Superfund, Volume One. There are two volumes that are, and Volume One goes through, right now goes to Part F. This came out in 1989. The world has changed since 89. This is our foundation for how to do risk assessment. If you go and look at it online now, we have an annotated version that kind of highlights things that have updated or changed since this came out. But there are literally many, many documents that clarify and expand upon those guides. So there's a lot of different places. This is not the only place to find guidance. And if you have any questions about guidance or where you need to go to find something, feel free to run them. So the Red Book laid out four parts of risk assessment. Hazard identification, exposure assessment, dose response assessment, which we also call toxicology, the toxicological assessment, and then the risk categorization is the final piece. So let's start with the hazard identification. In this step, this is where the risk assessors take all the site data. Hopefully, they've been involved in the writing of that data. Make sure that it's of adequate quality in order to make risk assessment decisions on. Make sure it's complete, that we have everything we need. We'll compare that data to background, where that's available. Where it's appropriate to do that is usually for metals, things like lead, arsenic. Where it's not appropriate at this or another side of things like explosives, volatile organics. So we would compare, you know, the metals against what's naturally in the ground so that we're not making inappropriate decisions. We will compare the data to risk-based screening levels. These are available at this site and other places, but this is one place where you can find it. To identify contaminants or potential concern, when the site went through, they identified these based on site history, the things that they wanted to make sure they sent people to find. So I'm gonna go through by media. So soil, volatile organic compounds, things like solvents. Semi-volatile organic compounds, things like benzoyl pyreneine, polysylic aromatic hydrocarbons with pA Hs, other things with long names, nitric aromatic, this is what they were making, the cordite, pesticides, herbicides from where they collected these metals. CSMBZ, which has really long names. There are other explosives-related chemicals and cyanide. So that's what they were looking for in soil based on their site history. Groundwater, similar laundry list. They included some of those down here that are good indicators for, you know, some of these things we collect, not because they're contaminants, but to know if the groundwater environment is right for breaking down some of these bigger organic compounds. But, you know, so they've collected some of that. For the most part, it's the same laundry list that we saw in soil.
So I'm sorry.
Yes.
You decide what to look for in a professional sense on the basis of what had been going on there or on some other basis?
Based on what we know. Let's make sure that we, and this is a pretty comprehensive list.
What we know about what had been going on at the site?
And then, you know, there's maybe existing data from previous investigations. Well, we know that, you know, these are the metal, you know, based on the site processes, the volatiles, other things. But when you analyze the volatile organic compounds, it's a very long list. They get thrown out to that general category. So this is a pretty exhaustive list. It's tough to think of things that might be present there that we, that weren't out simply. Surface water, similarly, what was gonna make it down there, and sediment, soil runoff, things that ended up in the river, out of this list. So having all that, now we go to the exposure assessment, which is the next piece. And the questions we want to answer is who's gonna be exposed either now or in the future? And the future piece is important because we want to make a lasting decision based on the risk assessment, right? If we just, right now, it's a fenced-up property, very few people are gonna be exposed right now. But we're thinking about people who may work there in the future, people who may live there. How would they be exposed? Who would they be exposed to? Could be exposed to soil, surface, subsurface, sediment, et cetera. What kind of assumptions do we need to make about the frequency and duration of their exposure? And again, to why that's important. And then, you know, kind of take all of that and figure out which ones are we gonna evaluate either on a qualitative or quantitative basis in the risk assessment? Most often, the review is often quantitative calculation to quantify the risk. And that's part of our process of getting to the third. This is a little cartoony, but this is sort of the thought process. If the spill is here in this generic site, which has nothing to do with Chemtronics, there's a release here, yeah, it may be going down into the groundwater where people can, it'd be exposed to it in the future if they're drinking water well, if these are volatile contaminants, vapors may come into their basement or into their home. Windborne dispersion of soil contaminants can get on their soil when they get to that adjusted. We wanna make sure that we're thinking about the site in this way, that, you know, we're not missing sampling any contaminants and never quantifying these potential exposure pathways. So this is what it looks like in a cartoony model. What it looked like for the site is something like this. This is Table 6.2, if you've worked through the document, where they have a lot of conceptual site numbers. So these are onsite potentially exposed people, industrial workers are not possible currently, but maybe in the future. And here's the exposure media that they may expose to. Here's the routes. And it's okay if they can't read this, this is just an example, you know, this is what they did at the site. You know, they're going through and making sure that we're connecting all these dots that we're thinking about here in a rigorous way so that when we do the risk assessment, we're actually accounting for all these potential factors. And this is a long table. So here's some more recreational users, trespassers onsite. And then they talk about offsite residents, maintenance workers, and recreational users, both, you know, current and future. All right, so we want to get all this information. Again, this is the short version of all of the previous things. So they looked at these exposure scenarios, people who may be exposed either currently or in the future onsite and offsite. And at the bottom of this table is this note that, hey, we looked at residential onsite as a request of dean or EPA also made that request, but we got left out of it for some reason. I guess so, we didn't yell it enough. But they said that they did recognize any, and it's not gonna be a basis of decision. And this is important because what they're saying is we're gonna set up institutional controls to prohibit people from living on this site in the future. So we didn't look at, we looked at the pathway to appease dean or EPA, but it's not part of the decision-making process. You have to go looking for this. It's these actual calculations. There are various tables deep in the back. And one of my comments, back to John, to the facilities, hey, let's put this up front. Because they say it's not, it's not gonna be used as determining a remedial action. EPA's view is that an institutional control that bans future rent, future residential use is a remedial action. That's, that's an action that's being taken, so. Let's put it in there.
Because one of our potential comments related to this pretty directly, I think, as well. We can, we can come back.
Okay.
It really, that's still a bit.
It just, yeah, this, this kind of stuck in my head going through the document that I would like to know what those risks are without having to go off of them anyway. Because if it's gonna be part of, part of the decision of putting institutional controls, it should be. But that's something that we can, that would be, yeah. So, yeah, in this part, we're just also supposed to quantify the dose. And now I'm gonna start getting, stop me.
All equations.
All equations. So, but this is, this is important because it's, this is how we put numbers to the risk. When the risk comes out, that will base our decision on, here's where it comes from. This is one equation, there are many, this is a drinking water equation. So it's trying to figure out a chronic daily intake. This is different from the concentration in the soil. So there's, that's static. How you change this equation can change the dose that the person is exposed to, what they take in. If you don't take any of the contaminant into your body, then there's no risk, right? So using this equation, I'll, I'll just run through these, they're the equation. See, there is a concentration in water. So we determine that there's an exposure point concentration. So there's, I don't know, how many hundreds of water measurements, but we're gonna come up with a number that represents what people are exposed to. We have a method for doing that, I can go over to it. The dose here, and then we have ingestion rate. How much water do people drink in a day? Exposure frequency, how often do they do it? ED is exposure duration, for how long? Days, years, months? And that's over their body weight because that makes a difference. Times the averaging time, the averaging time is exposure frequency times the exposure duration. So from that, you know, if we start changing, well, somebody can visit the site, they, they may drink the same amount of water as anybody else, but they drink more of it on a daily yearly basis. Somebody who's a recreational visitor may not drink any, he just may be walking across. So this will determine, you know, we'll run this equation for each of those scenarios where groundwater is an exposure pathway and calculate a dose. How much is that? And that factors into the risk equation later. Any questions about that? Now, this is the water one, there's similar for incidental soil ingestion, there's similar for inhalation of vapors. There's a bunch of these, but this is one that's fairly easy and got the point across, yeah.
Does this assume that adult, not like children or anything, or is it?
We can, that's a good question. And so, yes, so where, where, where would that show up? Adults drink a different amount of water than children do proportional to their body weight. So those numbers would change, the exposure duration, the length of time that you're a child is different than the length of time that you're an adult, hopefully. So, yeah, we would do a separate calculation for children's exposure, add it to the adult for a resident. So we do both uses of that.
Ages for children is what?
Ages for children would usually go for the most sensitive, zero to six.
Year.
Years.
And is body weight the only variable that you shift for children and intake, like, is there any?
Well, exposure duration would be six years instead of 24 for an adult.
So there's some metabolic differences or other kinds of differences and then we got children right now? Or is body weight in one place?
There certainly are and those vary wildly by contaminant. Things like lead are much more toxic than children and we have a separate whole thing for that. But where we can account for that could be for toxicological differences and, and, yes.
What about pregnancies?
The development, yes, we, our reference dose, which we'll talk about about this in a moment, attempts to take into account potential sensitive sub-temperatures. So we do try to make sure that we're accounting for the exposure as well.
And then, if any, do you want eighteen?
That's the averaging time. So what's, and, yeah, so if, this is, actually, basically, it's the exposure frequency times the exposure duration. So this piece basically cancels the sub-temperature for non-carcogens. So how, you know, this is the average daily dose. So this is the average part where we're averaging how long it's for the kids. For carcinogens, we average it over lifetime. So it would be exposure frequency times the number, times seven years, I would pay it a lifetime.
The left-hand side of the equation?
Yes.
What, is that micrograms or is that?
This is micrograms per liter day. And I'm sorry.
Liter day.
Liter day. Yeah, no, mine is, yeah, liter day. Chronic daily intake or average daily doses would be ADB's hands for it. And I, I talk in acronyms because that's what I do. If I use one and I haven't explained it, please just call me and I'll try to take it. So where do we get those numbers like body weight, ingestion rate, lifetime, you know, how, what's the 90th percentile for somebody living someplace? We go to two sources, the Exposure Factors Handbook. Our exposure assessment group compiles a big book full of all the things that will go into risk assessment equations. And then there's also a child-specific exposure practice handbook. And here's the language to find those. So these are great resources. There's also a shorter version of the Exposure Factors Handbook called the Highlights, which is much thinner and much easier to kind of digest. But it goes through everything we know about exposure and how it occurs. So we go and fill them up so we don't have to figure it out at each step. Exposure point concentrations, I talked about that earlier. That's this piece, the concentration in the water. How do we figure that out? Normally, and this, this site did something different. So normally, what we would do is come up, what we're interested in is when there's a area or a unit or a site where somebody's gonna wander around, what is a conservative estimate for the mean concentration that they're gonna be exposed to? If there's, if this red square is the highest concentration and the rest of the room is pretty low, we, you know, would look at an average of this room. People don't stand in one spot, they're gonna wander around the site and be perhaps exposed equally. What they did in this document was assume that, let's start with assuming that a person is gonna be standing on the red square or drinking from the red square in our calculations, just to be conservative. If there's no problem, if there's no unacceptable risk, then we can just move forward and go.
So essentially, you're looking at a worst-case scenario.
Right. Right. Well, from a concentration standpoint, yeah. You're like, let's take the highest concentration of everything that we detected and put that in. And if there's no unacceptable risk, then great, we can write that one off. So that, that's it, that was a conservative difference, that's not one I had a problem with. I'm gonna be more conservative going back. So, yeah, if they, however, if they were above what they call the risk management, and we'll talk about what those are in a moment, then they would go back and refine the scenario. Let's go back and figure out, well, what is the conservative estimate of the mean for, if this was arsenic, let's figure out what the conservative estimate of the mean is for the arsenic, but take the max of everything else and raise that guess. So they kind of did an iterative, iterative process on this. Yes, sir?
You speak of the adults and then you speak of children, but do you speak to the risk of the adults passing on whatever through their genes to children by birth and things like that?
That's.
Are you saying like, well, there's mutation risk, Jerry? Or breast milk exposure?
Do what?
Exposure through breast milk?
I mean, there are, there's an emerging area in toxicology that's epigenetics. It looks at how we can pass those things on. And we're not there yet.
I am.
This is short answer. You might be, but we don't have a way of doing that. I don't know how we would do it is, is the, is the short. And once we figure that out, then we can account for it. But we do look at the potential for mutagenic mode of action, but that looks at more your person, like, changing your DNA and how does that affect you? The passing it along, so it's a heritable change, is something that we're still trying to wrap our heads around and figure out how to work it into our system. If you've gotten the antitussin.
Well, you're really affecting children by the adults passing it on, of course. So it'll kind of be a risk.
Sometimes that, and when does that occur and when doesn't it? Is the, is the answer that we don't know. The toxicology as a science is still catching up to it, not just EPA and that's everyone. How do we, how do we account for that?
What about following the people that is on the list that's been there for years? Has that been done? To look at the risk of the families and people that's worked there and their?
EPA does not do that. We're not, that's more of a, a public health thing. So statutorily, I don't know that we have the authority to set that up and do that. That maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But agencies like CDC's Agency for Toxicology and Disease Registry would be somebody who's equipped to do that and has the epidemiological resources to do that.
My question here is larger than just what you're doing because if you don't include the health department people in this equation, you ain't evaluating the real risk.
Jerry, we should probably move on, but we can take a note of this question. I've got it and the idea of, has there been follow-up with folks who've been on site?
Thank you.
But, so if we can take a note of that.
So this speaks to soil sample locations?
Mm-hmm.
So is, is what's described here, is that different than what was going for the water exposure?
Yes. You're on. The next slide is for groundwater, they calculated a risk for every single groundwater. So if the well was drilled here, what's the risk here? If another well was drilled in the green, what's the, what's the concentration there? There were multiple rounds of sampling, so they took the highest concentration of every contaminant detected and ran through the risk assessment, by the way.
And that's the highest detected concentration for each COPC regardless of that? Is that true?
Yes. And I say yes with a W. I'm pretty sure. So I will flag it and wait for it to go back and then check. All right, so now we get into the toxicological assessment of dose response assessment. And what we're doing here is gathering all the, what we know about the toxicology and what we don't. So we've got our contaminants that are, that we've detected, that we've determined, that we've calculated some risk. While we haven't calculated the risk yet, so what we need to do now, we calculated an exposure dose. So now we have to go figure out how to quantify the risk by looking at what we know about non-cancer effects and carcinogenic effects. And there's two things that we're looking for, you know, for, for non-cancer effects, we're looking for the reference dose. The reference dose in, I should have put a slide for this, but in classical toxicology, we have, it's called a dose response curve, and it kind of looks like this, it's a sigmoidal curve. Down here, there's no observable adverse effects. We could, in these animals, it's usually animal studies. We're looking around here, nothing, nothing. And then we have a dose here where we start to see some effects. This is the lowest observed, lowest observed adverse effect level. This is none.
Up here.
This is, this is, thank you, I need to label my answers. This is concentration. So as concentration goes up, we're seeing, this is effect. So whatever it is we're looking at, kidney damage, death, whatever. So usually, it's, it's a specific effect. And you're right, but one of the things that they do is, is a mortality studies to figure out, you know, a number that's, here is called LD 50, lethal dose 50, where, what dose is gonna kill 50% of the animals? That's a good metric for how toxic something is. And up here, all the animals get the kidney leak, have, have a, I guess, a enlarged, you know, lung, whatever it is. So what we take, you know, this is the, the lowest concentration where we saw no observed, no ads, no observed adverse effect level. That's our starting point for our endpoint of concern. So there might have been 50 studies done, depending on how popular the chemicals were graduated. And, you know, we go to look through that. And, you know, we go to look through that and look for, this is the effect of interest. Usually it's the one where you're seeing something happen at the lowest dose. We take that and we, then we apply some uncertainty factors to it. If it's an animal study, there's extrapolating from humans to, from animals to humans. Then there's intraspecies variation. So we, this number may go down by an order, by ten, by a hundred, by a thousand. Usually three thousand, a safety factor of three thousand is where we draw the line. That's the reference dose. The other thing that we're interested in, again, this is effect, concentration, is for carcinogens, we're looking for the cancer slope factor. In order to see, we can't do studies like this for, for cancer where we have a number of doses because it takes relatively high dose to make sure that we can see the cancer as statistically observable effect. So we, our starting with some higher cancers, it's higher doses. And we may see a line like that. Well, you know, what happens down here? We don't know. This is where people are being exposed. What we do here is take the slope of this line and extrapolate this line down to zero. So now we have a slope factor of this line. Then we can use another questions. And I'll show you how we do so later. Any questions?
But do you always mind a linear relationship between?
We assume that there's a linear relationship.
So is it an assumption that it's linear?
Yes, and that's been very controversial because people are like, well, no, clearly there's a threshold here.
Right.
But you're assuming it keeps going. It's a conservative assumption and it's linear. There are some contaminants where that threshold effect was documented, observed, and we're starting to work in, you know, past this and then the line starts. But most of the time, we're assuming a linear slope.
And are you always assuming a sigmoidal relationship, a sigmoidal curve with your?
That's the classic one. There are other, there, this is called a monotonic dose-response curve, but it means it moves in one direction. There's some new studies that are, that are showing that the shape doesn't always. You may have things like, you know, to use an easy one, iron, where, you know, again, your concentration and your effects, if you have very little iron, you may be showing negative effects from iron deficiency and your slope may drop. And then your animals are all healthy and then that effect level goes back. And there are other shapes too.
So do you use a specific model for whatever individual?
Yeah, so what we're looking at is regardless of the shape of the curve, what we're trying to pull out is either the no observed adverse effect level or the lowest observed, depending on what the study was able to find. Sometimes they don't get this, so we'll take this and put it on certainty factor.
So you're assuming that value, not using the actual pattern?
Right, right, the pattern almost doesn't matter. What we want to pull out is when do we see no effect and let's back up from that. Okay?
Are we going to be hearing about the epidemiological risk assessment as well?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to be time conscious. Be a lot of a late start. It's for all of us, just to be mindful.
Okay. I'll always do that.
We're doing, we've got over an hour in our session left, but I'm not sure how much time we'll be.
I'll pick up a case here. If you want to know where to find a reference dose and the cancer slope factor, E P A's iris database is a good place to start. That stands for, oh, yeah. But it is our central database. Well, this is, this is our go-to place. That's where we start. If there's not one there, then we go to A T S D R and see if they have something. If they don't have something, then we can go to the open literature. But usually it's one of these two places. If you're just curious about what are the health effects of that contaminant, A T S D R tox facts is a great place to go and look. They're very short. Some of these iris files can be hundreds of pages long. These tox facts are usually like short handouts. That's what they're intended for, to be handed out at meetings. If you have a question about the health effects of a particular contaminant, go here. If you want to pull out some more evolved stuff, you can go.
Right, so it's just two, yes. So programmatically, the reference doses are those for, for all of these contaminants that you use in the process? Were those all established by E P A or established by others and incorporated in E P A's information system? Who really decides what the reference dose is?
If it's in the iris database, E P A has decided. And that's part of a big process on its own. Toxicologists in Research Triangle Park in Cincinnati, other people who do that, they're assigned a chemical, they live with it for a few years in Shepherd and Long, write massive documents that say the number is eight. And, but they have it defended along the way and there's a lot of pushback from all sides. And, you know, we end up with the number. And then we can, you know, use it to quantify the risks. But, yeah, we, if we don't have one, then we, then we have to go outside of that. Our, our go-to place is C D C, A T S D R. C A T A is another good source of, they have a huge tox program. So what are those three places are, and sometimes we just don't have. And then we have to make a qualitative assessment of the risk. So risk characterization, again, we want to put a number to the risk for our decision-making. It synthesizes the data taken in these first three steps, presents, we're hoping to get a quantitative estimate of the risk if we have a cancer slope factor or a reference dose, we can do that. And from this, we're able to identify the contaminants of concern. The risk characterization stuff, there's a slightly different approach used at Chemtronics. I'll go into what the difference is in a moment. These are our formulas, again, these are, this is a pretty simple formula. We're taking that chronic daily dose that we looked at before, the average daily dose, E P A, and multiplying it by the slope factor to come up with an E L C R, stands for excess lifetime cancer risk. What is that? Tell you that in a system. And we assume that these things are additive. And toxicological effects are not always additive. They can be, two plus two can equal eight, two plus two can equal zero in some cases, two plus two can equal three, two plus two can equal five. So there's a lot of different assumptions, but we don't have the ability to evaluate the toxicity of every chemical paired with every other chemical. So we have to assume additive. This is another layer of uncertainty.
On the conservative side?
On the conservative, well, maybe not, maybe not necessarily. If they, if they multiply, in the classic layer is cigarette smoking and asbestos exposure. Your lung cancer risk is exponentially higher than if you did one of those two things. But it is, again, this is a limitation and a good risk assessment, we'll talk about all these uncertainties.
So one of our potential comments on the Dr. I had to do with how we handle the risk associated with exposure to two or more contaminants. And so is the answer that it's treated actively?
It's treated additive.
So it's like each is happening, the studies are done with each happening independently and the risks are simply?
Are summed, yeah. And, and that's, that's something that E P A has recognized as a limitation. For a long time, there's just not, you know, we're, studies are done on chemicals one at a time, but we're exposed to mixtures all the time, both at sites like this and in our day-to-day life. And how do those work together? Most of the time, we don't know unless they're paired. White cigarette smoking and asbestos exposure, ways that we can measure. So what we end up with?
One last, so when you have put aside the glands that there was something, not to take a look at the whole thing. When you do put these summed up numbers together, is there any sort of anecdote, like, sort of like this article you mentioned with the, you know, lung cancer, with the two things? Anything that is available, we know this?
There, there is an uncertainty section in every risk assessment. So if you want to know the limitations, a good one will mention it. And I don't know if that specifically.
Sure.
Within this one.
Sure.
But a good risk assessment will say, hey, here's, here's what we base the decision on. Here's the holes, you know, not holes, but the uncertainties. And those uncertainties can go either way sometimes. Some will only go one way. Where we incorrect for that, we try to do a danger search. Where we don't know the direction, you know, we do the best that we can. So what you get out of it for a cancer risk is a baffling number like this, three point four times ten to the minus six. For example, that's just a number I pulled out of the air. What that means is that there is a three point four in a million chance of developing an excess lifetime cancer risk. An excess lifetime cancer is a cancer above your background rate of cancer. In, in the general population, depending on who you talk to, there's either like a one in three, one in four chance of you personally getting cancer. So a three point four in a million chance on top of that of getting cancer. And so we're adding these up and I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. For non-cancer, it's a simple ratio. We are looking at our dose divided by the reference dose. And if the ratio is greater than one, then there's a potential for health effects, potential. If it's lower than that, then we're generally saying, okay. These are also assumed to be additive. We have cancer risks and non-cancer risks. We don't have ways of combining those. So we're summing, we're summing our cancer risk and we're summing our non-cancer risk, but we don't have a way of lumping those together. So what does it mean, Q hazard quotient of three point two? It means that you're basically three point time, three, three point two times greater risk of, you know, you're three point two times above the reference dose. And, you know, why do we care? It should be, you're either above or below. When we come up with numbers like this, we can compare the sites, other sites. We can look at the risk from here to the one down the road or whatever. We can help prioritize these risks, help us to prioritize things in addition to deciding when to take an action on that. So this has nothing about probability. So this is just, you're above the reference dose by this statistic. All right, so how did Chemtronics differ? What they did is they took their laundry list of chemicals and said, if the, if the concentration of every one of those chemicals was one, what is the corresponding risk? So they calculated the risk for every, and why did they do that? Well, there was forty-five sites, there was what, ten exposure pathways, there's three medias. What they wanted to do is make it easier to come up with a calculation. So what they would do is then when they got a concentration of their site, that at this site arsenic is four, let's multiply it by the unit risk, number of a risk number. It took me a long time to wrap my head around what they were doing and why and was I okay with that? Mathematically, it works out the same. You're getting the same number at the end of the day. And I had to spend a lot of time with the site's contractors to explain to them what they were doing. And I spent a lot of time in their spreadsheets. Mathematically, it works out the same. And to where when I had to figure out a quick way to apply, calculating risks at the coal ash site, I used that, I installed that. So I'm comfortable with what it did, but it took me a lot of time to get there. Any questions about?
So when you say the large number of sites evaluated, what are?
What I mean is that there were, it's one site, but there were forty-five different areas that were investigated. There were, you know, this is where there was a mixing area or something. Draw the line around here, all the samples that might be related to this area. Let's look at all the risks associated with that. No, basically from building wise, each area, contamination was associated with a, a building. That's, that was one of the forty-five areas. And so since this was going to be repeated over and over, they found this shortcut to get to the same place.
So that could be like three wells by a building, but that would be under one sort of?
Yeah, yeah, and it's. Yeah. And there, but there they were calculating risk for each well. It's more, more for soil, I guess. But, but they were also, I mean, for groundwater contaminants too, there was a unit risk for arsenic in groundwater. Multiplier the concentration, it was two point one times what it was.
So you hadn't seen this done before?
I had not seen it done before. I've read a couple of jillion risk assessments and I've never seen this approach.
Couple of jillion.
That's a, that's a technical term. But, yeah, and so I know what risk assessments look like and I know where to go find what I'm looking for. And I had no idea where to look or where to find or what's going on. And it took me months to be like, okay. And we explained that this might be a problem early on. They're like, well, bear with us.
And you are uncomfortable with it?
Yeah. But if you want to get comfortable with it, take a calculation, you can.
I have other plans.
Once you know what they're doing, it's, it's easy to go through and confirm their.
It does make sense.
Yeah. So like I said, it took, it took, it took a long time for me to get on board. And then I started my idea and showed over.
And then, so then the risk assessment article comes out, it's still like E P A lingo? It's not this Chemtronics sort of internal lingo or is it sort of both?
It's sort of both. And, you know, it's one of those things that David Lilly is the risk assessor for the state. We're both like, what, you're going to do what? You can't do that, that makes no sense to us. What are you talking about? And so, and then he said, well, we're going to, we're going to take our chances and do it anyway because we've got, we've already got it set up. And to run this many calculations over and over again, it's a very labor intensive. To go back and redo it was going to be lots of other, you know, not that money figures into whether I like it or not. They said that we're going to go ahead and they would explain it to me and I, okay. And that's where we are. It took, it took a long time. And, you know, it may, it complicates the document in that people who are used to seeing data in a certain way are just suddenly baffled. Well, what is all this? But if you have no set conception going in, it may not make a difference to you.
So, so I know it would take longer than this meeting for you to get us comfortable with it, but just, just so I understand, with this unit risk approach, so you've got the unit risk for all these different locations and then the actual concentration for a specific location gets multiplied by that.
Right.
So, so how do you, so how do you then take all of those numbers or this large number of sites and, and get back to what's really the exposure and the risk for an individual who's residing there?
Once again, you crystal ball my thoughts. On the next slide, what we're going to do. So how do you, you've got a number for arsenic, you've got a number for beryllium, you've got a number for cobalt, all those things, what you want to do is now put it all together. So we're going to, everything's, we're assuming non-cancer and cancer are additive. So we're going to add them up in soil, we're going to add them up in groundwater, we're going to add them up, you know, within each pathway scenario, then we're going to combine the risk across all those exposure pathways so that there's for the residential risk. So the person who's living off-site or onsite, there is a number, what is his risk for exposure of all that? For cancer? What is his, what is the total risk for non-cancer? And I'll show you what that looks like. But first, what's acceptable or safe? I keep talking about acceptable risk and unacceptable risk. You know, your perception of what's safe may differ with mine. But we have, you know, in statute, this is what E P A says is acceptable or not. There's an acceptable risk range for non-cancer. It's one in ten thousand to one in a million. And one in a million, we look at it a little closer. If it gets above one in ten thousand, that's usually our point where we're like, now we're inside danger. When we get above one point seven minus four, right, yeah, that's not good. We need to go and do something. Or it contributes to hazard index greater than one. So when you add up all those things, if you have hazard index greater than one, non-cancer, then that's a potential health risk and we need to do something. And if it exceeds background, it's applicable. So sometimes we may back out something if it's, if the background concentration has determined by sampling. So sometimes we may back out something if it's, if the background concentration has determined by sampling environmental media nearby that's not impacted or higher than what we're seeing on our site and it's not a site-related risk. So what does that look like at our site? So chemtronics, there was, yeah, this, yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, can we go back for one second to the mathematical part?
Which part?
Uh, back, that one, the unit risk.
Yes.
So there's been processing while you're talking, and I'm wondering, I'm going to use the words for a second. But, so if you're talking about if they're calculating unit risk at 1 milligram per kilogram and that happens to fall here, and then they're using that to multiply by the actual concentration, is that what you're saying? That they calculated the unit risk assuming the concentration was equal to 1 milligram per kilogram?
Right. So they're, they're just, and that's just because that's a number that's easily, you can multiply against.
Sure.
So, you know, let's look at arsenic. Arsenic, 1 milligram per kilogram in soil would be equal to a risk of 5.3 times 10 into the minus 7. But in our site, our actual concentration is 13 milligrams per kilogram.
Okay.
So now we multiply this by that. And it gets us to the same.
But does it still work given that some of these curves, the slope will be different depending on where you fall on that?
Yeah, because it's, because we're looking here, so the cancer slope factor.
So that's only for the cancer slope factor, not for...
Well, for this example.
But what about for the toxicity?
And then over here, yeah, it's the same thing for the HI. If, and...
Does that make sense with a linear relationship? It doesn't make sense to me with a nonlinear relationship.
Yeah. It, it, well, let's think about it. So for non-cancer for our...
And I won't take too much time, but I do want, this seems like a much more important.
Yeah, yeah. So if our, yeah, let's say that 1 milligram per kilogram equals 0.3.
On hazard of the...
On hazard index, right. So that's a third of, you know, what we're roughly, of what we're, 3, it would be 0.3.
Right. And that makes sense to me if we're on a direct linear relationship, but if we're not on a linear relationship, it could push it above this threshold where this is no risk and this becomes severe risk. And it's not a direct linear relationship where you could just multiply.
But you've, but you've, you've made it a linear relationship.
You made it a way of...
Okay, so you converted to...
Because all you're doing is referencing the, the...
Yeah, but by making it a ratio, we've kind of, yes, made it in fact a linear relationship. So whether I or not I took, if I did it just as soon...
So this part actually converts it to a reference based on this point?
Right. And so we, again, when we take our reference dose, we're kind of agnostic of what the shape looks like.
No, so I'm just, so let me just clarify. I understand that part of it, but so this, in the calculations that they did with the unit risk, they used the reference point, not the entire shape of the soil.
Right.
Okay, okay. That is, thank you.
Okay. So at our site, you know, and you can't possibly read these maps, so if you go to the figures, you can find it. These are the soil that are flagging it, and I'll have a summary that tells you what this is. They had a couple of different things. Here's where the soil exceeded scenarios. Here's where risks were running acceptable for groundwater. And then the other thing that they did was like, well, even, what about risk? Soil does not have standards. So you can, it's always a risk-based decision for soil. We have drinking water standards, the state and EPA. So you can, once you do the risk assessment, you may be like, hey, that's fine. But then there's these drinking water standards that we also look at. So there's, there's two different maps. One is this is risk, things that exceed risk, these are the ones that exceed the standard, the drinking water standards. This is what you end up with in the back of the document. Yeah, so here's an area with a number. Here's the risk for outdoor, for industrial workers. You know, there's an HI negative minus 3. So it's just sum. So all, all the contaminants are going to roll up.
What's the H I?
That's a hazard index.
That's a hazard index, sorry.
And so here's all of the receptors that we look at, right? So you can kind of go through and see, and this is just take, this is the top part of a much longer table, but it was the only way we could make it by people. So they're rolling up all the numbers. What do they find? So I am still working through if I agree with all of these findings, but here's what they found. They have 2 sites with unacceptable risk for potential, in soil, exposure to contaminants in soil. They have 2 sites out of those 45 that are unacceptable for risk for potential future industrial receptors. So for that receptor pathway, I'll have to go and dig and find what the residential was. It's going to be a big one. It's going to be more big. Groundwater, 2 wells present risk from vapor intrusion, breathing the vapors and contact with the water table. So the, the water table was shallow enough in 2 places, that being exposed to the groundwater itself directly is a risk. 49 of the other wells present risk that they were used for potable one. They're not...
I'm sorry, these were all assuming that there was a potential use in memory?
49 is...
Oh, well, potable.
Yeah, but that's potable by the industrial use of it. That's industrial use.
Yeah, because if you're residential, you're going to have a crater.
Right. Yeah. So if you go there and work for 25 years, 49 of the wells are going to present unacceptable risk. Offsite, none of the wells that they've sampled that exist outside of drinking water wells that people, residents have drilled in or drink, consuming from, none of those exceed drinking water standards. But they said if the contaminants, when they looked at wells that were within 200 feet of the boundary, they said if people were drinking from these wells, they would present unacceptable risk. But they're not yet, so that's something that would need to be addressed. Settlement surface water for humans, looking at future trespassers, maintenance workers, construction workers, recreational use, there were no unacceptable risks there. So these were their findings. Again, I'll be reporting back to John if I'm on board with all of those. I would like to know what the residential was on site. Sharon has a lot to tell you, so I'm going to let her go. I am happy to stand in the parking lot all night long and answer any questions that the guys have. But if you need to, here's how you can reach me. I'm going to make the presentation available to you. If you go through it at home and you have questions, you can reach me to ask me questions throughout.
Are there any standards that EPA or the state has changed since the last reevaluation in terms of 3 parts per billion to 1,000 parts per billion? Has any of that changed that would make a difference in the risk assessment?
The drinking water standards are a slower-moving thing than the tox values. So we may get an updated tox value for RDX, let's say. Where we're like, we're going to change our number, then it takes, we can calculate the risks immediately and know what the answer is. It sometimes takes longer for states and EPA to go, oh, now we need to change the drinking water standard. There's, yeah, there's kind of a lag in there.
But are there any that's affecting this today?
I don't think so. None, none jump out at me. I'm not aware of any recent drinking water standard change.
And the state just changed yours in 2010?
Yeah. And I, so I don't think we have any changed. And the ones that we've changed recently, I think we're nothing with.
Thank you.
Alright, let's get Sharon.
Thank you, it was a nice meeting, dear. That was for...
You're welcome.
Let me find, I'll give them some...
It does look like it.
Just before we get on, the risk, the name of the company that used the risk assessment, because it was not one, right?
It's Enviro.
Enviro, right.
Yeah, they came down to Atlanta and spent, they spent like a full day holding my hand, they walked me through it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is now going to be risk assessment 101 here. I'm hoping that we covered the risk assessment process in the last presentation. So I'm going to try to focus more on some of the results of the risk assessment, at least how I see it. And I'm going to try to focus on some of the things that are just a little bit different about ecological risk assessment in human health that we just talked about before. And so if you have questions, you can stop me and I'll try to answer your questions. And if I am messing up the site a lot, you know, you may know more about the site than I do. I've been to the site once, I've read this report, but I haven't been, I don't have a long history of involvement with the site. And this is a diagram here of the ecological risk assessment process that was taken right out of the report. And I try to simplify it a little bit. And the actual ecological risk assessment process involves 8 steps. But 8 steps is a lot of steps, so I'm really going to talk more about the first 4 steps and just focus on those because this risk assessment was fairly simple risk assessment in that a lot of what was done was just looking at the concentrations that were detected in the media and comparing with available screening ecological benchmarks. So we have here the screening level ecological risk assessment in the top box and then we have the baseline ecological risk assessment below. And when you do a risk assessment, you like to focus, it's mainly a process of kind of sifting through a lot of information because you have a lot of data for the site and a lot of chemicals were analyzed for. And you want to kind of focus down on which chemicals are really going to be possibly important in figuring out how to clean up the site, which are really causing the risk. And what is the risk due to and how are the chemicals at the site interacting with the ecology of the site or other, are there risks at the site? So it's like what Tim was saying, that there is a hazard identification. That would be what you'd be doing in the first step. That has the cause of screening level problem formulation and ecological effects evaluation. So in that step, we're looking at the setting of the site. What type of receptors are there? What type of wildlife is there? What type of habitat is there? And so we know that one of the most important features is Petree Creek, the unnamed tributary. And there's a natural pond, 2 man-made ponds. So there's some very important features from an ecological standpoint, and also, you know, the terrestrial ecology. And then you'll see, like the second thing that Tim said after the hazard identification was the exposure assessment. And that, some of that is going to happen in your step 2. That's where you're looking at the maximum detected concentrations. At first, first conservatism, like you said, red box, you look at the highest concentration and we'll see if that's a problem. And if it isn't, you know, then we can kind of filter that out. And in step 2 also, we're identifying the screening ecological benchmarks that are available for that chemical. And there's what we call a scientific and management decision point that occurs at the end of step 2. And for certain chemicals in certain media by certain exposure pathways, we may be able to rule them out, that they're not causing a risk because concentrations are low relative to a conservative screening benchmark. And if there are some chemicals, there will always be some chemicals that will exceed these conservative screening benchmarks, then we'll take those chemicals on into step 3. Step 3 has a refinement of the conceptual site model, so it has a formulation. And then the main feature of the second box that I put in larger font is the baseline ecological risk assessment where we can do food chain modeling, just kind of like what Tim was saying about the water, where you're looking at how much usually wildlife receptor is going to be exposed. So concentrations in the food, how much food they eat, per body weight per day. And then there are toxicity reference values in terms of milligrams per kilogram per day that are very similar to the reference dose that Tim was talking about. So that, that would be this one right, this right here is his reference dose. So basically, below this concentration on a dose response curve, you don't think you're going to see an adverse ecological effect. So there's also a scientific and management decision point at the end of this step, which is really, is looking at, at the end, do you really have a risk? And what is the risk management outcome? So I'm going to go through some of what was, some of the, just basically some of the findings at the site. And in steps 1 and 2, we have what we identify what we call preliminary chemicals of potential concern. And you take the concentrations of chemicals that are measured in the environment and you go, do you have a question?
Yeah, so for the reference values that you're using.
Yes.
Are those species-specific or are you picking one for the species of most concern? What, how's that work?
Well, in steps 1 and 2, we're having a very general model so that we're really just picking the most conservative value that is protective of all the species. So we're, so in general, if it's in surface water, if there is a North Carolina state standard, that is designed to protect 95% of the species. And so we're trying to find something that's conservative, that's protective of all species. And if we have it, you know, sometimes we don't have values for all the species. So we're, then if we know it's going to biocumulate and it could be of concern for wildlife exposure, then usually those we have to assess in which amounts.
You prefaced your answer to Bill with in steps 1 and 2.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And what is the, so is it different in step 3?
Well, in step 3, you may be refining your conceptual site model. So in steps 1 and 2, you're really just looking in general, is it going to be toxic? You may have a screen value. For soil, we have screen values for birds, for mammals, for soil and for plants, maybe for microbes. And we just take the lowest, the most conservative one among all those and we screen it in the first step. But if something turns out to show a potential risk in that step, we want to look into it further, then we might look carefully into exactly what kind of risks we have.
Home species.
Yeah. Then we might, but we kind of are using a filtering approach where we do something very conservative at first steps. Just to pare things down a little bit.
Are you filtering out specific contaminants, statements? Or are you filtering out specific exposure pathways? What's getting filtered out from step 2 to 3?
Well, it's mainly contaminants, but you can also filter out exposure pathways because you may be able to find that for certain of your media, that you really don't have any contaminants that are driving risk. And maybe that you don't have any contaminants that are bio-impacted, maybe you don't have any better volatile. So it could depend.
So what kind of habitat assessment and species presence assessment have they done at the site?
Well, you know, I think that would be in the report, but I guess that would have, you'd have to look it up in the report. And I don't know if they did. I don't think they did any kind of a quantitative habitat assessment, but they probably at least have something qualitative in there.
So what were you using then, when you were looking at the ecological risk? Were you using a specific habitat type to do your, to get your, you're talking about how you're using some sort of base values? Where are you getting those base values from?
Well, we have, I'm using this, the region 4 has some conservative screening values that we have, what we use on our, from our website. Well, we had, I'm using this, the region four has some conservative screening values that we have, what we use on our, from our website. And so I looked at those for chemicals where those, that was how the report was written. Is they kind of use literature sources of these screening benchmarks that, they're generic. They don't apply to a particular habitat type.
So they're generic across all terrestrial ecosystems?
That's right, that's right, they are. And so that's why in steps one and two, we're using generic information. And so the idea is that you start out with very conservative generic information. And then if you, if it looks like there's a potential problem with that chemical, that could be a risk, then you go to refine that with more site-specific information and reevaluate. So that's what you do in step three.
Okay, and so those conservative values are, at least in theory, as far as you know, based on the most potential risk that wildlife would be exposed to in all of the terrestrial ecosystems possible? The terrestrial ecosystems is incredibly broad.
Yes, so it's just, it's pretty generic at this point. And because it's just a process, so some of risk assessment is process. And so I'm trying to explain that the process is to go from a very conservative assessment that's going to err on the side of including more chemicals. And they may not really be as much of a risk at this particular site. And there are some variables that can be, you know, adapted toward the site that will help you to refine this risk assessment.
Sure, I'm just curious where those conservative values come from, where in the literature?
Well, at this, in this report, they came from, mostly from region four. We have a supplemental risk assessment guidance that has tables of screening values. So a lot of them came from there. And they may have used some from other regions where they didn't, maybe they said they used some region five values, some region three values, if region four didn't have a value. Now, there may be some chemicals, because we have some unusual compounds at the site, that there was no value from a legitimate source. And so those, there are other sources of information that I used when I prepared this talk. So that I could give you an assessment of all of them. And so I can put up, you know, references to that.
Okay, thanks.
And so the first couple steps, this, I took this particular bullet right out of the risk assessment, is that these were the categories of chemicals. Volatile organic chemicals, seminole, organic chemicals, metals, pesticides, nitro, aromatics, flash and beans. And perchlorate, those were the categories of chemicals that were identified as a potential. So there were a lot of chemicals, probably maybe close to 45 or 50 chemicals. So we didn't go through all of them. And then the conceptual site model. And I'm kind of getting into your blending steps two and three now because I'm just trying to get through the talk now. So the conceptual site model is really a very important part of understanding the site. Because you want to describe, just like, I mean, Tim showed that picture with the little house on it, what we're talking here about the natural world, the natural environment. But we're trying to describe the sources of chemicals at the site. How the chemicals are released into the environment and how they're going to migrate in the environment and spread in environmental media and expose receptors. And in this case, a lot of the receptors we're concerned about are in the creeks. Not all of them, there's also wildlife. We're not going to get all of them, but the creeks are pretty important here. And what it appears to me, my opinion about the conceptual site model is that important pathway of exposure is that we have some chemicals in the soil. Could be, ecological risk assessment, really looking at surface soil. But you can have some chemicals in subsurface soil that'll lead you to groundwater. And that groundwater could be discharging to creeks. So that could be a pathway that's important in the site. And also, when you're looking in your conceptual site model, it depends on the type of chemical you have. We have some chemicals are maybe volatile, they're not going to persist for long periods of time in the creek if they are discharged to the creek from the groundwater. But when they're in the creeks, it means that you might have a persistent source. There are other chemicals, the pesticides, that they can have a very low concentration in the surface water, but we have conservative North Carolina standards for surface water because pesticides can accumulate in the tissues of aquatic organisms. And they, so that's a different pathway. You have a more persistent chemical that has a different mechanism. And that's why they did food chain modeling at the site. So I wanted to just tell you, and I just picked out from the tables, the chemicals that I thought were site-specific and they had relatively high concentrations, just to tell you about them. And some of the ones I found were pyric acid and these are the maximum concentrations of milligrams per liter that were detected in the surface water from the site. And this is just from a table in the risk assessment that I tried to copy into this presentation. So we had perchlorate, HMX, RDX, one nitium nacetylene, you know, there's other chemicals like that. These are probably just breakdown products, some of your explosives. We have aldrin, chloridine, hepticlore, and trichloroethylene were detected in surface water at least maximum concentrations. And these chemicals, for the most part, except for trichloroethylene, are persistent in the environment. And what that means is mainly in soils and sediments are going to persist. Your HMX and RDX can photo degrade, they won't be as persistent in the surface water. And the concentrations in the surface water are fairly low relative to effects values that say the chemical being toxic to fish, being toxic to waterfleas, dampens algae in the surface water. That, in general, your nitro aromatic, your nitrogen, your explosive compounds were present in the surface water at relatively low concentrations compared to the values that were toxic to fish. So that in the refinement of chemicals of potential concern, those, I, in my opinion, that I would think that those are probably not as much of a concern. But we have low concentrations of some pesticides in surface water. And because we have conservative North Carolina state standards, because these are biocumulate and they're very toxic, even these low concentrations that are in the tens of minus five, like milligrams per liter, that those would stay in is of concern because they're very toxic chemicals. And trichloroethylene also is of concern in the surface water because it has a constant, a maximum concentration of 0.66 milligrams per liter. So it's potentially, you know, there's some potential it could be toxic in the surface water, that concentration.
So is this step two, this is where you, is that what you used?
Yeah, well, this is step two, but I'm kind of blending steps two and three for these. Because all we're really doing is comparing them to a certain, a benchmark. So it would be too repetitive to do it twice. So, and then sediment, I just looked at some chemicals that I thought are maybe important chemicals here that, and we have the, on the top, we have four of the explosive relayed compounds. And we had CS, which it seems like it's pretty toxic. And it had, these are some of the maximum concentrations. And these maximum concentrations may have, you know, they may be associated with some toxicity to the bank. And I'm just basing that based on the surface water toxicity and looking at how the chemical would partition into the organic carbon in the sediment to assess whether it is potentially toxic to the bank. Aldrin, the concentration, there was a concentration there, but I guess aldrin was a lower concentrations in sediment and frequently detected. So it seemed as if it was more in the surface water than the sediment. And PAHs, we have low molecular PAHs. And those are your PAHs that have maybe two or three degrees, I believe. And they're more mobile and tend to be more toxic than the high molecular weight PAHs to the aquatic environment. While the opposite is true in human health. Because human health, the high molecular PAHs are the carcinogenic ones. So that's why they're toxic to humans. So these were present in the sediment. And groundwater, the way the groundwater screening was done for ecological risk was they didn't look at every single well, but they looked at the wells that were closer to the creeks. And the wells that were shallow enough that might represent groundwater that could be flowing into the creeks. And so trichloroethylene seemed to stand out as potentially of concern in the groundwater for discharge to the creek because we had maximum concentration of 30 milligrams per liter. And then we had it also detected in the creek. But this wouldn't be persistent in the environment or biocumulate. But what could happen is we might be seeing some trichloroethylene that is discharging from contaminated groundwater to the creek. And soils, we had, again, there were some areas of the site that had polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons in soils. We had aldrin, copper. And, but then, most of the detections of the PAHs, aldrin and copper were isolated to around forward process areas or disposal sites. There were some that in terms of looking at just direct toxicity, specifically toxicity more to your plants or your earthworms, there was really just an isolated areas for the, these, mostly these chemicals. And we had HMX and RDX, they had maximum concentrations of 600 milligrams per kilogram, including 200 milligrams per kilogram respectively. I'm sorry. So these, no, there's potential toxicity in, from those to your soil and vertebrates. And we also had little tetral. And we had two 46 TNT in disposal area of 23 soils and maximum concentration of 60 milligrams per kilogram. So now going on to kind of looking at what we did in step three is that...
Quick question, was that all of the ones that the report found to be ones that were of potential concern? Have you got over everything that the report found to be of potential concern? Or are you just highlighting some of them?
I'm just highlighting some, and some of these are ones that, that I identified. Like maybe the report didn't say anything about tetral for risk to plants. Because I mean, they didn't really have a toxicity value for it. So there, these are mostly the same. But then, when we're getting on to some conclusions after this slide, those conclusions are pretty much coming directly out of the report, is what they concluded for food chain evaluation, which I was going to talk about now. But, so assuming we're done with steps one and two, we're starting out now with step three, is what we do is we were in our refinement of our conceptual site model, the ecological risk assessment will identify ecological receptors and assessment endpoints. And here we, in the site, there were four ecological receptors or categories of receptors here that were assessed in, for the site. And we had...
My risk assessment doesn't count.
No, we talked already about the terrestrial plant and vertebrate communities. And about how, well, how I was assessing those. I was looking, you know, they, we have screening values for some of those. But for things like tetral and BZ, we don't really, there aren't so many screening values available. So I was calculating them based on estimates of their toxicity in surface water. And I already explained to you that in those past slides, what we, the results. And the aquatic community, what we're doing, we're looking at the surface water, we're screening in sediments, and we're screening those. But what these ecological receptors are, those are the entities that we're trying to protect at the site. The assessment endpoints are the attributes of that entity that we value. So for terrestrial plant and vertebrate communities, we value having diverse communities. That means lots of different species there. And the structure has to do with maybe the types of species that we have in categories. Like maybe some of them might be, you know, terrestrial plants or vertebrates. We had some that are deprimor vertebrates or riverborne vertebrates. The function is what we value about, you know, maybe that we value plants because they control erosion in vertebrate communities or soil fertility. So those are the things we value about these. That's what we're trying to protect. It was just a statement of what we care about. And so what we're, we have here is, we talked mainly about the top three, but mammal and bird populations, those were assessed for, through the food chains, so we'll get to that. And potential risk to the plants and vertebrate communities in step three, they were evaluated pretty similarly to steps one and two by comparing, instead of the maximum concentration now, we're talking about the average concentration. Specifically, it was the 95% upper confidence interval on the knee. And it was the average concentration detected in each of the evaluation areas. And we're comparing that now to a screening benchmark. And in step three, we also bring in background, compare the background for our metals. And we're looking at wildlife risk to food chains. And these are some of the results. I already pretty much told you about the results for the terrestrial plants and the aquatic community. So we're just going to talk about the food chain analysis. And these results are coming right out of the report. And what the report concluded is that aldrin in the soil of this particular unit, APDA 789, presented a risk to the American robin, a hazard quotient. So that is the dose to the robin that's like coming off the earthworms per day, the concentration of aldrin in the earthworm, which is just modeled, just predicted based on the concentration in the soil. How many innings per day per body weight? And then you divide by that reference dose and you get the hazard quotient. So they looked at the American robin and the screech owl. The screech owl is eating mice that are at the site, mice could accumulate some aldrin from eating on earthworms or plants. And, and so you have hazard quotient for this screech owl. But these hazard quotients were driven by a single detection of aldrin, a 12 milligrams per kilogram in soil at edge of the acid, acid pits. So there was really only one high concentration of aldrin in soil. And as Tim was saying before about the red square, is that you have, you know, you assess the highest concentration. That may not be the concentration that a receptor is exposed to if they're not standing in the red square all the time. But if we had, in the case of this particular unit, there may not have been very much data so that when they assess this upper confidence interval on the average, it could have defaulted to the maximum concentration. So they were essentially assessing the maximum concentration as the average. So that's what happened with aldrin, it's kind of a mystery. We had high molecular weight PAHs in soils of this B 105, 139 and 119, 120 were presenting a risk to the short-tailed troop and the deer mouse in these other areas. So the high molecular weight PAH concentrations were really a couple of samples, B7 and B8, and they ranged, concentration across 140 milligrams per kilogram to 240 milligrams per kilogram. And the report stated that these samples were probably taken through asphalt so that they may not be PAHs. No, but that could just be these two locations. So there could be PAHs at lower concentrations elsewhere. But these particular, the highest concentrations could be swayed by the asphalt.
So these particular points are talking about specific species, deer mice, short-truths and different bird species as well. Was there a species survey done on the site? Where were these just species that aren't likely to be present in North Carolina and the Appalachians?
Yes, I don't, there was no species survey that I know of, not here in the site. So there was no actual survey of species. These are models of fairly generic, the deer mouse... The deer mouse, I don't know if it would occur at the site. The short-tailed shrew probably does. There might be other kinds of mice at the site that are specific to this area. But as the amount of food that they eat relative to their body weight is going to be fairly similar. It's not going to change the assumption very much. Ultimately, a factor of two at the most.
It seems like to be a very paper-weighted kind of evaluation here. Not realistic to the area, talking about all these things coming together. It don't sound like to me that you evaluated or not you. But it's not been evaluated specific to the ancestry of our community, of the animals and plants. To be specific, did they actually evaluate animals and look at them and dissect them and have them analyzed to see if it really is true?
Well, I don't think they've gone that far. Because the way the risk assessment is, is it's in this tiered process. So we talked about the first two steps being very generic and very conservative. And then this third step, it's still pretty generic. And, and so that there's a possibility of doing additional work if you still find that there's a risk, if you need that information to make a decision. But if you find that most of your contamination in soils is associated with some small areas that can be cleaned up, then if the decision is fairly easy, easily bounded and understood, then you don't really need to do additional studies on the animals. So it kind of depends on the results.
I guess I'm curious about going back to the generalizations, you know, finding these average consumption rates of the white, the short-tailed shrew. A, what, I mean, are they up to date? I mean, it seems like something was, there's an older piece of information today's. Variety of foods for wildlife has sort of shrunk, I would imagine, for most areas. So, I mean, who's testing accuracy in some of these things regularly? I guess that's my question. Are these things being tested for accuracy?
We have a wildlife exposure factors handbook, which is dated 19, I don't know. It's a little bit old. They have a program that's coming out, WCM, which is the Wildlife Exposure Factors. But it's more of a web-based and it has more information in it. And, but when we do these risk assessments, we don't really have defaults. Like ecological risk assessment is not the same as human health where there's a manual that, that Tim showed that you go into it and it tells you what exposure assumptions you should assume for your industrial worker or your child resident. That in ecological risk, that there isn't as much standardization. So if there is knowledge about the site, this particular species, and a lot of that we get from the communities. You know, that's how they tell us there's something out there that's a unique exposure out that we haven't made a consideration in the risk assessment. And a lot of that is customized and we look up specific literature to support this one report. I mean, if you think it's different enough. But these particular assumptions don't usually change the results very much compared to other assumptions. And the thing that could change it is if you choose a smaller receptor. Certain receptors like the short-tailed shrew is a very small animal and it eats a lot for its body weight. So it's going to be very conservative. And same thing with the American robin because it eats the earthworms. Those tend to accumulate a lot of contamination and it's a smaller bird. And, well, we usually find if you choose, some, certain animals are pretty conservative. The owl is always be conservative because it's consuming mites. They're assumed to bioaccumulate a lot of the chemical from soil. So most, the deer mouse may not be as conservative because it is primarily consuming vegetation. And many of these chemicals aren't, they're not absorbed into the vegetation. They're not uptake to the vegetation as much as they would be into an earthworm or insect or fish. So that one is looking at a different exposure pathway. That's because certain chemicals may be more likely to uptake to the vegetation, right? That chlorates, for instance, maybe does. So that's why we look at a variety of receptors in the risk assessment. So anyway, that's what they concluded, the report concluded about the high molecular weight pH. And there, there's copper in soil is also identified in the risk assessment. But there really was one high concentration of copper detected at this one area, the B 124, 135. And it presented a risk to the American robin and several other wildlife species, in this case, almost all of them. And hazard quotient's around 2.7. But this one copper was isolated. They went back and they couldn't really find it. They took samples around it and they all had lower concentration. So that probably wouldn't be a risk to these wildlife receptors because once they start integrating their exposure over an area, they're not really going to be in that red square very often. So it's probably not going to have very much of a risk. So even though on paper, it looks like there's a lot of risk, it probably is not in actuality. Because copper is not widespread at the site. And there isn't one area, a debatable area, that you go to take sample and get high copper. So I wouldn't be too concerned about copper. But other things to think about are some of these, of these compounds are associated with the explosives. And like 2.46 TNT at disposal area 23 had a deer mouse and hazard quotient of 20. And that's based on the concentration of the chemical 60 milligrams per kilogram in soil at similar location. However, there weren't a lot of other sections of the 2.46 TNT. And that, the next highest one, it was only 4.3 milligrams per kilogram. So there isn't, so what I'm saying is that even though you calculate a risk to the deer mouse, there probably isn't, or realistically, there probably isn't a lot of risk to it because there isn't a wide enough area that's contaminated so that the deer mouse is in that area all the time and being exposed. So we have RDX in soils of the debris area one. And those present a risk to the American robin. The other one, like receptors, hazard quotient runs to five. And we had an elevated, either the upper confidence limit on the mean risk estimate, so they're based on a single detection of RDX at 5200 milligrams per kilogram. And then we have the next highest at the site was 5.4. And so that there's not really a whole lot, there's only just some isolated areas at the site where we have the RDX. And they're associated with that debris pile. And so I wanted to just summarize the conclusions down just for surface water and sediment and then for soil. And surface water, what we found is we had some concentrations of the nitro aromatics and amines in surface water. And they appear like they could be coming from groundwater or some kind of ongoing inputs. Because they may not be so persistent in the surface water unless they're constantly being fed by resources. So these contaminants are breaking down and they're not really toxic. They're not at high enough concentration to be toxic to aquatic life, but they're present. And they're kind of telling us that there could be some ongoing inputs of chemicals. And the concentrations of pesticides, most notably aldrin, were detected in the creeks. And those were at high enough concentrations, they could present a risk. They're exceeding the North Carolina state standards. And we also trichoraphylline in the creeks, especially the unnamed branch. And it could originate from contaminated groundwater oozing impacting the creek. And its presence in the creeks is reflecting ongoing inputs of groundwater.
And is it higher than acceptable risk levels?
Well, there isn't a North Carolina state standard for aquatic life for TCE. So what we're doing is we're just looking more at literature values and values that are estimated to be toxic to a sensitive aquatic species.
Is it, is it toxic? Is this, yes, it is?
It could be, it could be at some of the concentrations detected. Now, it's probably going to be some, you know, different locations, different concentrations. And it's going to depend on sporadic, you know, maybe certain planky samples could be higher than others because creeks will vary in inputs that are contaminated.
But is it, it is at some point and sometimes, I have to be toxic?
Yes. So I think that groundwater is a concern. So sediments, we have some nitro aromatics and amines in the sediments and that could be present in sufficient concentration. That it's possible that they could impact the, bend the communities. And this is where if some sites you might have toxicity testing or do something that's more site-specific than this risk assessment did as a next step to follow on if, that it was information that was needed to make a decision. And we got low molecular weight pH in these sediments in some areas now. Exactly where I couldn't really tell you, you'd have to look at the report. And pesticides such as aldrin, they weren't really detected at high levels in the sediment, but more in the surface water. And then there was just one hit of aldrin in the soil that was high. So we don't really know where it's coming from. So that's kind of the question about the aldrin in the surface water. And soils, the conclusions were, is we had some risk to, we, the, the risk assessment calculated this to wildlife. But then when it discusses that in the conclusion section, the conclusions are that they're not, wildlife versus are not of primary concern at the site because we don't have high areas. We don't have large areas that are contaminated, just isolated pits in surface soil. And not really a wide enough area is contaminated so that the wildlife are exposed to that sufficiently over their entire range of movement that they're, that we really would expect that that would be a significant risk at the site. And so soil contamination is a concern because of potential source to groundwater. We have subsurface soil contamination. And certain areas of the site have elevated concentrations of the nitro aromatics and amines that are a concern for direct contact exposure to soil and vertebrate communities. And so we have HMX and RDX and maximum concentrations of 600 milligrams and 5200 milligrams per kilogram. Those seem to be in the debris area one. But those are just probably a small area. It's not, there weren't very many hits of those. And the 2.46 TNT is of concern, disposal area 23, with a maximum concentration of 60 milligrams per kilogram. And we have some pHs in soil of potential concern. And they're not only due to asphalt because we know that asphalt is going to be high molecular weight pHs. But what we're seeing in the sediment is low molecular weight pHs. So we've got different kinds of pHs in the sediment. So we know in the soils, there are some pHs somewhere that are of concern. And just because the report is just focused on the highest concentrations, it might have been by asphalt. Well, not all of them are by asphalt. So that's something we have to look into further. So those are the conclusions I had. And I think that's the end of the talk here. So I've got my cards out. All right, questions?
We've got about five minutes left. I'm going to huddle. But I, I want you to help me on the, in the draft video for the ecological risk assessment. This is at the very end of the text. And what it says is, based on the information developed, it's concluded that conditions of the site do not pose unacceptable risks to ecological receptors. Therefore, no further action is warranted at the site based on ecological receptors. And I was wondering if you are in the same state as Tim, is, have you completed your review? Are you in agreement with that? Or do I understand your role in this correctly? Like, do you agree with that conclusion?
Well, I did provide comments on the site. And then there are some revisions to the report that are being worked on.
Okay.
And I believe some of the revisions are going to be looking more at the chemicals, the chemicals as mixtures instead of just screening them all individually. And that, I think the problem with the risk assessment was that some of these unusual chemicals, the explosive chemicals, when they didn't have information about the toxicity, that chemical was, was just not assessed. And so it didn't come through with the conclusions.
That seems like a major thing.
Yeah. So you put those comments in there. That, do you think that they should be put in the new revised version?
Well, I think that some of this is, is going to be, that, that kind of statement shouldn't be in the report because that's really what the scientific and management decision point is, whether there's risk, unacceptable risk at the site. And that's really more of a, is a management decision as well as a scientific decision because it's a question of how much risk is acceptable. You know, what, is there a risk here that's important enough to take action? And so that, that, that could be something that would depend on having an intimate knowledge of the site. Because if you have, I mean, for example, that the copper, we said there was only one hit. Well, maybe we think that copper is really a concern, but we can't even find that copper anymore. So there's not really any action that can be taken for that one. And if you have some of these that just are some isolated hits at, at these concentrations and they're in some debris areas, well, maybe the best management approach is to clean up the debris areas.
And I have one quick follow-up and then to see if there are some questions. And this section that I was just reading from is entitled, Summary in Step Three, A, BERA, Based on Ecological Risk. Scientific Management Decision Points.
Yes.
So we should not expect there to be such a section in this?
Well, they probably put that in there, but it's, they had the ultimate, that, that the consultant is writing the document and then EPA would accept it as theirs, but we would put our comments with it if we're not making them revise it. So we would say whether or not we agree with that conclusion.
It's not in order in the process of revising it. So they are just sharing comments.
What are the, in the risk assessment, what are the top three heartburning concerns that come out of the concern that EPA?
The top three?
Yeah.
For ecological, are you talking about ecological risk?
I'm talking about all of it. I want to, I want to know the three main big ones that just really pops out at you. Is that a hard question?
Uh, yeah, because I haven't framed it that way in my head. It, it, from, on the human health side, I think it's a pretty good document. So there's nothing that's keeping me up at night. This has got it, they need to address this or that. I, you know, I've shared my, my big concern is that they've evaluated the residential exposure, even though that's not an anticipated land use deep in an appendix somewhere. And I'd like to see that highlighted and talked about. Because they're going to make a decision to, or if they've not already, to limit future land use there. This would support that decision. So it should be presented and talked about. I think that's my big one. But I'm still, I spent a long time just getting on board with how they did things and trying to understand it. So I'm still waiting through it. So, right now, I don't have any, um, they've done things horribly wrong kind of comments. No big, no big red flags for me, human health.
I guess I have a heartburn myself. Even like the state, they'll look at the Brownfield site and they'll say, you don't have water lines, you don't have people hooked to wells, but you're heavily contaminated on the site. So don't worry about it. Well, for local people, you do worry about it because it's impacting you. My big concern with ecology of this thing, you don't have anything substantial where you've actually got an evaluation of the real things that live here. And evaluating them, you've got a lot of data from a lot of things that don't really pertain to our area. It's just speculation. And I think if you get deep into the ecology, you're going to find that it might impact the folks here bigger than what is being talked about. We need to be specific to the site.
Okay, so if we've got an answer to Jerry's comment, go for it. And then we've got Bill and then Chesa. No? Okay, go. Okay, go.
So, you know, one of the issues that I have, concerns that I have is, you guys weren't here for the discussion that we had where someone came and talked about how the sampling that the site was constructed and decided, doing the search of the history of what do we know about the history, based on that, decided to sample extensively in certain locations, but not sample very much in other places. And so it, it concerns me when you start with samples that originated because of that approach. Then in the end, the proposed conclusions, the proposed, you know, management decisions that were written in the, the PRP report or the consultant report relies on this notion that, well, we only saw one sample that had this particular contaminant at an extremely high level. Well, I don't know that I would be surprised about that because they constructed a very limited sampling regime to begin with, based on eliminating, you know, essentially going through the kind of elimination process that you're talking about here, but they did it at the very beginning of eliminating where we're going to take samples because we don't, we don't believe that there could be any contaminants where we're not taking the samples. So that's a headache. And, and so this, it concerns me that it's, it's almost as though we've, um, gained the result from the beginning by the way that we went about doing the investigation of the site so that in the end, we, it's much easier for us to say, oh, we only saw one sample that had this extremely high concentration, therefore the risk is going to be acceptable. So I, you know, if I'm, if my concern is not warranted, I'm really lucky, yes.
Okay, so sampling, three tiers, basically through sampling, so you found something like copper, which raised red flag. They went back out and tried to narrow where that copper is, just for a second. They couldn't duplicate it. So was that just a sampling error? Was that a ladder error? So with that additional sampling, at least the copper kind of goes away.
Well, but, I mean, I hear what you're saying and I, and I understand that thought process. You know, what I'm saying is that another thought process would be if we find some, some really important high hits, meaning high concentrations of things that we could potentially be really concerned about, in terms of human health and ecological impact. You know, another approach as opposed to we found this high hit here, so we're going to try to replicate it and go to this area would be, you know, gosh, I wonder if we ought to expand our sampling and look at a larger area to see if we pick up some of the points that are local hotspots. Now, that, you know, that wasn't done, maybe there's great reasons you wouldn't think about doing that, but, but it's just not apparent to me that there's, to within the review on investigation report, that there's a great explanation for, wow, this makes sense that we eliminated the sampling upfront and then we do the analysis and then we reach the conclusions that the sampling somewhat pleased us to.
The rationale is all put into the work plan. Um, and basically, you know, again, they, they have done a lot of work out there. They identified through all passwork what areas were a potential sources of contamination. And that's where they focused, is how they ended up with the 45, and then they started with 52 areas. And they did sample all those from, looking from an outside in. So, you know, a lot of those samplings, based on where they were, you know, were negative, which, and it's that.
And I might be okay with all of that until I heard tonight that, that this notion of, well, we only found it at one, this height, one location, then becomes part of the rationale that the PRPs are using for proposing a conclusion that says that overall the risks are acceptable. You know, that's, you know, it's not in and of itself the same thing. The truth I discussed before is that you start with that, but then at the end, you want to, so you start with this limited sampling regime or multiple things that you described, but then at the end, you want to throw out the links that lead to a conclusion that you might not want, is what bothers me.
Yeah, I think, you know, does that one organism, at least we're talking about ecological site, live in that one little square yard? No. So if it gets out to that, let's say, I don't know how big a grown up area.
Shrew lakers.
Yeah, copper, but of course we're hitting these four robins with multiple hits on this stuff, right?
Yeah, and so this work plan you're referring to, that's like some time ago, right? And we've, we've never looked at that. So it may be that that would help.
We haven't looked at it, but we did.
We're all described.
Yeah, we did have it described. So Chesa, this next up, I want to be, it's 8:38, so we're starting to run overtime.
So I'm curious about risk of bioaccumulation. You have some, some things that could bioaccumulate under slides. Um, and I'm also, um, curious about if you considered home range of some of these different species that you're looking at.
Yeah, they did consider, you know, I don't know that they used, um, home range factors in these, whether they just assumed their use factor was one or whether they considered that, but, um, that's something to look in the, look in the risk assessment to see how they handled that. But for the, the shrew, the deer mouse, the robin, the home ranges are small, so I think it wouldn't have a large effect, but being for the owl would be more of an effect.
Well, but you're saying the home ranges are small, so if their home range happens to be where there's a high concentration, then because their home range is small, essentially there could be a significant amount of competition limiting their ability to expand their home range out of that contaminated area. You could actually have significant impacts even in small, even if they're large small areas, if their, if their home range isn't competitive.
A distinction between the human health side and the eco side that I always have to remember as a human health guy is that, um, if in a human health risk assessment, four or five of my humans die, that's, that's really bad. If four or five mice don't make, the population of mice at this site may survive and that's okay from a standpoint. Um, and correct me if I'm getting on here, but it's more of a population, they have, what are the impacts on the, you know, will the animals be able to reproduce? Will they serve their same function in ecosystem? So it's a, it's a little more flexible than, I mean, but, you know, humans were not, you know, it's, you know, is there a potential for this to happen? Yes, then, then there's a problem. And then if for eco, it's, well, can this happen? Yes, but is it going to impact, you know, you know, the ecosystem? Is it going to impact the population of fiend mice? Um, so there's a little bit of a different worldview on it.
Right.
And I don't know if that's helpful at all, but I'm just.
Well, part of my concern as a conservation biologist is that there doesn't seem to have been any assessment done of actually what's present on the site. And if we don't know what's present on the site, we don't know if there are any species of concern for the state or species of concern federally. So, and with the species of concern, where you have small population numbers, then it becomes incredibly important if you're losing five or six at a year.
Absolutely.
So.
I think they did say something.
For endangered species in that basin, they did.
They did do an assessment for endangered species.
Well, they got a, you know, a letter from, it's just wildlife, I believe, which what you're supposed to do is get a population.
Whatever's in that.
So they, so what does that mean, when they got a paper review?
Well, my recollection from the first RI was that there was only one endangered species out there and it was a plant. I forgot, it was a liverwort plant, but we've never been able to document that. But other than that, and that was based on work done in the ages.
Sure. And even that site has been relatively undisturbed, but I wouldn't be terribly surprised if it was a significant wildlife resource at this particular.
There would have been a literature review.
Right, but nobody's, I mean, I'm, I'm a local conservation biologist. I'd love to go in there and do an assessment of the species on the site. I'm, I'm not allowed to go in there and assess the site. So I can't, there can be no literature showing that there is an endangered or species of concern because I, there's no access to the site. It's much easier to study to get the literature.
Yeah, I think it's from the state and the Toronto, exactly where it comes from.
And who puts it?
I don't know, they put it together.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be honestly pretty surprised if there weren't some salamanders out there that were of concern. This is a pretty big biological hotspot for salamanders in this region and they can have very small ranges in terms of just population levels. So this might be something to want to drive into our comments.
So we've got one more hand, um, and I, I know I've got to go home.
What?
I don't know. What's wrong with me? So what do you think, Paul, for one more hand?
Um, I think, I think if you need to take off, you can take off and then, and Bill wanted to complete your comment and then you should get together as a board and talk about it. Okay, nice.
And I'm serious about if, when we have to get out of the building, if y'all want to ask more questions, I'll may have as long as y'all want.
We don't have to call once, remember?
No, we can stay.
So, so one thing that Sharon talked about is, is something that I've been concerned about for, for a while, and that is that you have TCE, so just looking at TCE specifically. So you have TCE in the surface water. It's, and so the report talks about the concentrations and what conclusions folks might like to reach based on those. But, but the fact that it's there and the fact that those concentrations are being maintained says that there's, there's a continual source of TCE that's providing this TCE into the surface water. And, um, so, so you have groundwater plumes that, that have expanded and that in some areas are very close to the site boundary. You have a, apparently a continuing input of TCE that's feeding this concentration that exists in the surface water. And so, so perhaps in the snapshot of taking these samples in the remedial investigation report, the, the concentrations from a human health standpoint are below whatever you would like to see or not, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I think TCE was showing up as a, as an issue when, when groundwater wells were, were used as potable water. I don't think that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so my concern is the, the proposed solution to this seems to be just don't let anybody use, don't let anybody drink the.
Now, leaving the groundwater alone because nobody's drinking, and I don't think a set is not a solution that the state or EPA will exempt. The National Contingency Plan that directs our whole Superfund operation says that we are required to return groundwater to beneficial use. Beneficial use is defined as people are able to drink. And so that should address that concern. We're not, so, but whether or not, you know, right now they're showing no risk for two areas of soil for, you know, only to, for industrial use, um, putting up a fence will prevent, you know, maybe if there's six more, I don't know. Where residential use was an issue, that would prevent that. Um, but drinking water is a different thing and, um, just leaving it because nobody's drinking it right now is not acceptable to anybody.
So the goal is to restore the groundwater to potability?
That's, that's.
The goal, yeah, that would be one of the remedial action objectives.
Yes.
Or restore.
It's totally different than what it's, so.
But anyway, to answer Bill's question, that's one of the reasons why they're doing some of those tree building things out there is to see how best tree groundwater works most contaminated, but.
Yeah, and I appreciate the effort being taken on that. I'm just always a little concerned that maybe people do a bunch of studies and conclude that, well, none of these are as effective as we'd want or they're all too costly or whatever, so we're just not going to do any of this stuff. So, but you, you addressed my comment.
Well, just, you know, leave with expectation that may come back to bite us. M and A, monitor natural attenuation is, is an acceptable remedy in that they let Mother Nature take care of the problem. So, and you're up there now and putting in another 60 monitoring wells in the back valley to be able to monitor what's coming out of the facet there. Their hope is turn off the pumping wells and let's just see what happens. Because downriver, it is not showing up monitoring. So somewhere between 300, 400 yards, Mother Nature is at the root of the issue.
Well.
Somehow.
To the property.
I'm talking about in the back valley where the highest concentrations are in groundwater.
To do that, there are hoops that they have to jump through, like showing that the, someone was not expanding that.
That it's not discharging the surface water?
It is discharging the surface.
And I talked, there is a stretch in the back valley where we are finding high levels of TCE, but then when you go down to the next sampling or two sampling nodes downstream, TCE is not to be bound because it's all alkalizing on the surface. So, yeah, in that little stretch, it may be, have a toxic effect on aquatic plants.
And it, and have there been any studies or anything looked at the ecological effect of that stretch of the river having an impact? Because in, especially aquatic ecosystems and a river ecosystem, having a stretch of the river impassable may have dramatic ecological impacts.
Well, this is a little stream, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they did do some venti community assessments, so that would be looking at the diversity of organisms that are in the sediments living there. And they, they found that the unnamed tributary had more degraded conditions than the other parts of the sites or some of the other.
Stretches of the.
Stretches. So I think they have looked at that. They didn't know if it was caused by the TCE.
So is it basically a venti and vertebrate, background vertebrate water quality index? Is that what they're?
I, well, yeah, I think that's what they were doing.
And it seemed like they lowered them to the surrounding.
Well, yeah, I think it was lower than the reference, but it, and maybe lower than the beet tree or the red branch, but I think those were all probably maybe a little lower than the, than a reference site offsite. But that, I don't know if they had a good upstream references. I'm not sure how long this unnamed tributary flows before it encounters a contaminated groundwater.
When we define contamination in the tree creek above, it's kept on this too.
That's right.
Beet tree creek is not necessarily perfect, so. I'm sorry, what, what about the bioaccumulation? I think we moved on from that question.
So we did not, one thing the site does not have is, um, you know, I don't, we have fish tissue, site-specific fish tissue or any kind of, maybe these streams are too small for, well, there's some are perennial, but maybe they're, they don't have large fish. But they could sample some biota in there to see the accumulation and that might give a little better of an idea whether this, this, how much risk there is for something like the pesticides because the concentrations are really pretty low, it's just that we've got low standards and because of the bioaccumulation is of concern. But they still would be required in, as far as for the revenue, you'd still be required to meet the state's standards. And that is just kind of confusing to know how, what to do, how to address it because we don't really know exactly where the contamination is coming from.
Hey, John, is the monitored natural attenuation, is that in the CFRs or in some guidance or where could I look that up to see what?
There is guidance.
There is guidance.
Could I find it or?
You shouldn't be able to. Should be able to Google monitored natural attenuation guidance.
There's, there's three lines of evidence, yeah, there's, there's, you know, we have to find the fact, one, find bacteria that will do the job in groundwater, off gases, just by products.
If you can't find it, you can follow the husband and tell you where it is. I mean, I have it in the office where it is, but I don't, I don't know where to look at.
Yeah, I can't give you the URL.
Probably if you do, you'll find it though.
EPA, M and A should come up.
And for those, you know, what is the timeline on that? Cause, you know, so we don't want to permanently label this water as non-potable, but what, what is an acceptable timeline as far as the EPA is concerned? If we're looking at sort of natural versus some supplemented treatment.
Is the stem?
The, well, I would say 30 years juicy, but is the timeframe you look at?
30 years from when?
From basically completing the remedial action.
Giving it a place.
The construction.
The treatment.
The construction, the construction of the remedial action.
Okay, and so have there been remedial actions for the water in the past?
They're ongoing now.
They're ongoing now.
Okay, and so how many years has it been since that was put into place?
That was put in place in ninety-three.
Okay, so at what point do we say that's not going fast enough? Now we definitely have to do something faster.
And, and that's what we're really looking at, at least in the acid area. That's why one of the ideas that will probably be included in the feasibility study is to put a containment wall around the acid area to keep anything from continually migrating out of the acid area.
So like isolate it so groundwater can't go in and groundwater can't go out, just like the wall all the way around?
Right, but then you're still damming that area.
That, that, that fine acres.
That might never be a.
Will never be used again.
So that might be an acceptable sacrifice in the EPA's eyes. Five acres might be acceptable, but not.
Because you may not be anything better to do with it.
Well, you know, the other options, potential options to dig up and do something, but that, that cost.
Which we've talked about, right?
A cash flow.
Okay, now I'm just trying, I'm trying to get the lay of the land in terms of what exactly are the sort of normal goals?
And you know, a lot of what they're considering with Monitor Natural Tenuation is also doing something to lower the concentrations before they let, just, I mean, that's what their treability studies are. They're looking at ways to lower the concentrations in the groundwater.
At source.
At the source, so it's lower when it has to.
Right, and those two talked about some horizontal techniques and things like that.
You, you bring up a good point. She's talking about building this barrier, concrete around a certain area. At Adinka, you got a ten acre landfill with a concrete barrier around it, but you gotta factor in the rainfall and how much water is going in the top, not coming in from the side, so.
They, they will put an impervious cap on it, so no infiltration of groundwater, uh, sort of.
How big an area are we talking about?
Uh, the acid area is about five acre area and it's already gotten impervious cap.
Okay, how deep, how deep is it?
That, probably twenty, twenty-five feet.
And it's not got a concrete bottom in it either?
It does not.
So, so we're not.
And that's one of the problems, that's why we're, we're continuing to see high levels of contaminants in the groundwater, downgrade of the acid area because something's moving through there, yes.
It sounded to me like in the folks that came and gave a presentation that, that the actual contamination could be a problem in the future going to Swananoa River from the way they described how it was traveling. So it, it might be a pretty big concern.
The PRPs are doing a good effort out here, I don't have.
I ain't talking about the effort, I'm talking about they actually explained to us that it was traveling pretty good.
Where refractions are oriented, that's where the groundwater's going, yes.
One thing that concerned me, and I brought this question up and what Yens was talking about, the risk assessment, is as you get to the gate to the right, the factory on the right plus the water pool beside it has not been evaluated and it's right there at the gate going in. And it's a private, it's a private area.
Jared, that area has been evaluated and is being dealt with under the state ripper program, yes it has.
Yeah.
Well, they said it hadn't at the last meeting.
It has been.
So.
Both of those areas, Tand Corporation.
Right.
And Asheville Dye and Finish Room, they're both.
They're both being, they both have remedial actions in place.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but the fellow told us that it wasn't, or it hadn't been evaluated in this assessment.
Not in part of the Cap, not in part of the.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, that's what I'm talking about.
No, and there's no need to because it's being done under a different.
Okay, how does that affect what we're talking about tonight?
Well, neither one of those sites have anything going offsite. They both, all the contamination is contained offsite, so it doesn't affect Contronics at all. It doesn't affect anything going on on the Contronics site because it's all contained on those sites.
See, we're not privy to this information, we're taking your word anecdotally that, no, it doesn't, but that don't mean, it's like these chemicals, they're assessing them one at a time, but collectively, they're not.
We have, you know, in this, in that CARA website that I know you've looked at, I can show you where the reports are of what's going on at Tandian.
I really appreciate that, yeah.
I think we need to wrap it up at this point, um, because we are getting to almost nine, almost nine o'clock? Yes, it's almost nine o'clock, so we, we need to wrap it up. So thank you guys very much for coming and talking to us, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Hopefully you got a chance.
Yes, so.